Good evening. I'm Councilmember Chris Ray, and with me is Deputy Council President Hall and Councilmember D. Michelle. I'm going to call the June 13th, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to order. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hands. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'll wait to see if anyone has raised their hand. Kirk, is anyone joining us online?
We have one virtual attendee, but I do not see a raised hand at this time.
Okay. All right, and no one in the room. Okay. There will be other opportunities after each of the agenda items for public comment. So with that, let's get into the agenda today. We have two agenda items today, ID 1353, the Transit Study Gap Analysis, and ID 1414, Street Standards Update. The first thing on the agenda, though, is approval of the minutes from our May 19th, our ninth meeting.
I will we accept the minutes from the May 19th meeting?
All right, all those in favor of approving minutes from May 19th meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? That minutes have been approved. All right, on to our first agenda item today, which is the Transit Study Gap Analysis, presented by Thomas Valdez. Valdez? Valdrees, sorry, our Senior Transportation Planner. Thomas, take us away.
Great, thanks very much. Yeah, really appreciate your time tonight. And yeah, good after, good, sorry, good evening. My name is Thomas Valdrez, and I'm the city's Senior Transportation Planner. Today, I will be asking for your feedback related to the Transit Study Gaps Analysis. And so to begin, I'll briefly start by sharing some background information on the existing conditions analysis that we've done for this study. And we'll talk about what the transit network looks like today and what we can expect in the future. I'll then walk through a subset of the deficiencies that were identified as part of our gaps analysis, and then I'll ask for your feedback. So as we go through this presentation tonight, I just wanted to pause here and share with you the two questions that I'm hoping to get your feedback on. This first question is, should the city consider providing alternative bus stop amenities or local high priority stops if Metro has determined that improvements are not justifiable or a low priority per Metro criteria? And the second question that I would hope that you would consider is where meaningful improvements can be made to enhance the speed and/or reliability of high-quality transit service? Should the city consider the strategic use of transit priority treatments near signalized intersections? So again, just consider those as I go through, and please feel free to interrupt me if clarification is needed as I progress through this. Just to, again, to provide a little bit of background information, just to sort of ground our conversation, Attachment A in your packet contains the existing conditions analysis that was conducted for the Transit Study. And so there's a whole lot of information, lots of good stuff here, but briefly, just wanted to share some of the more important topics that sort of came out of it, just to sort of facilitate this conversation. And so as you can see, this first key takeaway is that the average Issaquah commuter tends to drive to work alone. But there are several commuters who have jobs that allow them to work from home, or many others are choosing to take alternative modes of transportation, such as riding transit, carpooling, walking, et cetera. And some more background information, this is a map of the current transit network here in Issaquah today. We have nine routes, three of them, the 269, the 271, and the 554. These run all day and provide frequent service. This means that buses come every 30 minutes or better. Five of the other routes, they operate only during the weekdays, during the peak commute hours. So these are really meant to just hit when there's more ridership, making sure that there's, you know, space on buses, making sure that people can get to and from typically their work and their home. And then this other route is the 208. This runs all day, but headways are about two hours, and this one goes out to North Bend area. So other services that are provided currently, there's the Trailhead Connect Direct Route. This operates seasonally and on weekends. A lot of folks from the area take this to go hiking. And there's also paratransit and specialized transportation services that are offered by some providers in the area. Another insight from the existing conditions analysis that I wanted to share is related to access. And just to provide a little bit of background information on how we're defining access. So transportation planners, transportation engineers rely on this idea of a walk shed, a bike shed, and a drive shed. So what is that? Essentially, a walk shed is defined, and this is based off of studies that have taken place over the last 40 years. So a transit rider is generally willing to walk about a quarter mile to access a bus stop or about a half mile to access light rail. So in North America, these are just generally accepted standards. So that's sort of what we consider as the walk shed. Transit riders are also willing to bike about a mile to access transit. And transit riders that are driving to a transit stop typically are willing to drive about two and a half miles to access transit. So all that to say, these distances can be used as proxies for measuring accessibility. This is sort of the industry standard for how things are done in a very quick and efficient way. So considering these, you know, high-level metrics, currently about 17% of households in Issaquah and 19% of jobs are within walking distance of transit. And so this is also, it's also worth noting that these very simplified metrics for measuring accessibility, they really don't take into consideration, you know, barriers that could exist accessing transit. So if the sidewalk isn't complete, for example, or if, or if there's some terrain issues, so like, you know, if it's a very steep direction to get from, say, your home to a transit stop, those would not be sort of considered in this simplified version. But all this to say, we can glean from this analysis that, for the most part, folks in Issaquah don't currently have, they're not within walking distance of a bus stop. So that's sort of not very surprising, but the numbers do tell us that. And so again, more background information to anchor our conversation tonight. We also, you know, we took a look at holistically where people are traveling today. Our analysis found that the majority of trips are starting and ending in Issaquah, so lots of intercity trips, over 50%. The second and third most common trips are occurring between Issaquah and Bellevue and between Issaquah and northern eastside cities, so places like Sammamish, Redmond, Kirkland, et cetera. And currently, traveling by public transit is no surprise. It, you know, takes significantly longer than it does to drive. However, as you can see in this infographic, if you see, there's some lighter, lighter yellow bars indicating that the transit and auto time ratio, so considering the time it takes to take auto versus transit is actually quite competitive, so that's kind of cool to see. So there are, there are some routes that are very competitive when you're taking a bus, and that narrowing that gap is really important. It's, it's one of the more important factors when considering if folks are willing to take a bus or if they will drive, which is typically the default. So narrowing that gap is really important when trying to get folks running transit in the city. So looking towards the future, the city is anticipating most of its growth to occur between now and 2050 in central Issaquah. And we're anticipating that travel patterns will remain about the same as they are today. So again, the majority of trips being intercity, and then we also expect trips between eastside cities and Issaquah to remain the second and third most frequent origins and destinations. And as we look to the near term, I did want to mention, so last month, Metro has announced that they will be cutting service to three of the nine bus routes that I described, and this will begin in September. The routes are the 214, the 216, and the 217. And sort of the reason for this is that Metro has explained they're dealing with some significant staffing and labor shortages, which is resulting in lack of bus drivers, lack of staff to sort of help with the routes that we have. And so obviously, we, we really don't, we don't want to see our services being cut in Issaquah. We really value our transit service. However, the three routes that they are cutting, ridership is currently very low, and there are some alternative transit services provided. These routes, and I'll just go back in my slide deck a couple slides. These routes are the peak-only routes, so they are of those five routes that run on weekdays during the peak commute hours. Three of those five are the ones that will not be returning after September. And so we certainly don't want to see that them being cut. However, ridership is currently low, and there are-
Quick question for you. Do you have any data on what Metro ridership from Issaquah is today versus pre-pandemic levels?
You know, on top of my head, I don't have it, but I can tell you it is lower than it was pre-pandemic. Certainly lower.
I mean, is it, I mean, and I, we can get the number later, but do you have a sense, is it 10% lower? Is it 50% lower? Is it a big number, Stephen? Jump in.
It's, Stephen Padilla, Long Range Planning Managers. I work with Thomas for the Transit Study. The data that we've seen, it kind of depends on the route. So the 554 experienced significantly less drop of ridership compared to a lot of the other smaller routes that don't provide the same type of service. So it kind of depends on which route we're looking at.
Great, thanks. Andrea, did you want to opine?
I do believe that overall, it is somewhere around 15% decline overall.
Thanks. Sorry, thank you, Thomas.
That's great. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, so, you know, again, these routes are, as much information as we know at this time, these routes will not be coming back. And, you know, we certainly don't want to see them being cut. However, you know, there are some significant staffing shortages, so Metro is trying to do the best that they can to sort of combat this. And so the cities, you know, we find that this is very important to, you know, everybody that, you know, comes to the city, folks that are currently using it. And we really want to help Metro make sure that they're communicating these service cuts. So, you know, the city's communication team, we're working directly with Metro to ensure that, you know, that these changes are going to be communicated to those who are affected. Some of the things that Metro will be doing is posting notices on the buses that are affected, as well as at the bus stops as well. So physical posting of signage. The city also is working directly with them to communicate this via, you know, our typical communications channels. We also work directly with a lot of, you know, community-based organizations, and this information is being relayed to them as well. So we're doing what we can to communicate these changes, and that's sort of where we're at with, with these service suspensions.
And so- I have a question here. Councilmember, or W. President Hall?
Thank you. Just, just to clarify then for the community watching. So we should be interpreting this as complete, as a cut, like, will not be coming back? Because the packet used the words temporary reduction in service or suspension, and even the word suspension makes it seem like maybe they did something wrong, like in school, and they'll be coming back. So just for the sake of transparency for the community, this, we should be interpreting this as a complete cut, right?
Yeah, great question, and I can clarify with the very next slide, if you don't mind. I can, I can, I can come back to this if there's additional clarification.
Perfect.
Great, okay. And so to sort of follow through on what I was just saying, East Link Connections, this, this is the planned implementation of the service changes that will be happening as, as light rail comes to Redmond, right? So light rail will be coming from Seattle to, through Mercer Island, connecting Bellevue and Redmond. Metro is teeing up the bus service that will be facilitating connections to each of those light rail stations. And so the idea is that in 2025, these routes were actually going to go away already. So what we're seeing here through this announcement is essentially a premature cut of three routes that would be reconsolidated. And the, the funding, the staffing, all that, all the resources that would go into that, the idea is that that would go back into the system. We are anticipating that the routes that we will have, so we'll have six routes after, after this. The routes that we will have come in 2025, Metro has, has promised that the service that we will have will be significantly better. Headways will be shorter on many routes, there'll be more buses running, they'll be faster. They're, I think they're, they're making some measures to make overall the transit system in the 2025 network should run smoother than it is today. So those, just sort of wrapping up that thought, those three routes will be going away as part of East Link Connections. However, they're just sort of prematurely cutting it before we get light rail. So in, in the interim, that is the rub there.
And, and thank you, Thomas. And I just want to also say, this is Andrea Snyder, also say that Metro is calling these suspensions. They're not calling them permanent cuts, so that's the terminology they're using. We're looking ahead with our crystal ball, understanding the challenges that Metro is facing regarding personnel and other resources, understanding these transit changes that will come with East Link. And we're thinking that we, these, these routes will probably not come back in the form that we're used to. We will be getting other transit service, so Metro's calling it suspensions. They're not saying they're cuts, but I think it would be wise for us to look ahead and consider them as essentially cut, but knowing that we will be getting a better transit service once the East Link connection is up and running.
Are you good there, Deputy Council President? How realistic is it we're going to see East Link in 2025, given recent developments on the Mercer Island floating bridge?
So you're asking city of Issaquah employees. We, we are not Metro employees, we are not Sound Transit employees. If we were to ask Sound Transit and Metro, they would say this is their best plan. I think, you know, I think that there's ongoing challenges they have, not only with the construction of the light rail itself, but also certainly the personnel that is required to really fully implement all of these service changes.
Thanks, and I, and I think it, quite honestly, it's an unfair question to ask you, but I think it's a significant data point for us in figuring out how we go forward, so thanks for that. Thomas, you're back on.
Great, thank you. So just to look even further into the future, from what we were talking about today, you know, as we, as we do look out, Sound Transit has sort of quoted us on a timeline of about 2041 to 2044 for light rail coming to Issaquah. And so 2044 is sort of like the, the budget-friendly one versus 2041 is a more aggressive timeline, obviously. So this is sort of the timeline that we're looking at for bringing light rail to Issaquah with the four line, which is that purple line. And so, you know, you can see it's connecting South Kirkland through Bellevue and to the central Issaquah area. And so in this timeline, the, the four line would be connecting also three stride bus rapid transit lines. And so that's the S1, the S2, and the S3, which are connecting from Linwood over through like Kirkland, Bellevue, and all the way to Berrien. So lots of really, really strong transit connections coming in the future. And so we're sort of, you know, just, just providing this background information as we consider what we're talking about tonight. And to support the future transit network that is expected, we really need to be talking about where, where people will be, will be going. And so the expectation is that half of Issaquah residents and the majority of jobs in Issaquah will be within walking distance of transit by 2050. That is because we are anticipating growth in the central Issaquah area. And we also anticipate, you know, the majority of jobs, the majority of households will be within biking and driving distance to transit. And so this is sort of using land use projections and transit demand modeling. So this is, this table sort of encapsulates what we assume will be in terms of growth in the central Issaquah area and the city as a whole by 2050, and sort of the, the walk shed, the bike shed, and the drive shed that we can assume from that growth.
Can I ask you a question about this table? And I'm not questioning it, well, I guess I am questioning it, but are there really 31,000 jobs in Issaquah? Because that's the way I'm reading this number. Because that seems really high to me. No, today, 2019?
That is the number, that is the number that we have for 2019. I think that also is folks that work from home. Yeah, I, this is straight from the U.S. Census, so I can't really speculate on, you know, how this, how this breaks down, but yeah.
Yeah, that just seems like, like, like order of magnitude high to me. No?
Certainly not order of magnitude. Back when I was in economic development and keeping a close eye on these numbers, several years ago, we were at 25,000 jobs. So I'm not surprised that a few years later, we're up at 31,000.
Okay. Learn something new every day, it's good.
Okay, I think I'll keep going. And so now, you know, all this background, where I think we're now ready to talk about the potential gaps that were identified through this analysis. But again, feel free to, you know, interrupt my, my, my presentation. I'm, you know, happy to field any additional questions as we go through. So to reiterate a point that I think I've made in this presentation, and I think, you know, we all know this, but just again, to ground us, the city does not provide transit service. However, there are some stuff, there's some things that the city can do to improve transit service that is provided by Metro and Sound Transit. And so one of the gaps that we've identified is the lack of essential, you know, very basic amenities that are provided at bus stops. And to sort of speak generally on this matter, Metro has criteria that dictates whether or not they would be willing or not to, for instance, install a bus shelter. And so 25 daily riders, you know, on the average is sort of the threshold for if a, if a bus stop is, is capable of having a Metro-provided bus shelter. And so, you know, as you can see here, this is over in the very room that you all are in. This is the, the bus, bus stop. There is currently, you know, very little for folks that are waiting at that bus stop. So that's sort of just, you know, one example of what some bus stop amenities are provided. And, you know, the city hasn't done a whole lot of thorough analysis to determine, you know, which bus stops would be, you know, potentially within Metro's criteria or not. But just as an example, countywide, we are told by Metro that over 375 bus stops would qualify for a Metro-provided bus shelter. And currently, Metro is only installing 25 shelters per year. So one could do the math, and you would see that there is a significant backlog of shelters that currently meet, you know, Metro's criteria. However, they, they don't have the, the resources to go out and, you know, provide the shelters that they've determined are, are worthy of, of being input. And so some of the upgrades that they have put in, they're, they're really prioritizing because they, they do have limited resources. These prioritizations are typically based on things like demographics, equity, access to community services, and other sorts of considerations. So all this to say, the question that we have for you today is that, you know, considering the need for basic amenities at bus stops, should the city consider alternative needs of providing bus stop amenities for local, and I'll call them high priority stops, if Metro has determined that improvements are not justifiable or are a low priority per Metro criteria? And so some of the things that the city can do to improve bus stops could include coordinating with Metro on capital improvement projects near bus stops. We can make these bus stops shelter-ready, so, you know, Metro would have the, the concrete footings available to them, and they could simply throw a, you know, standard, you know, they have multiple standards for, for bus shelters. They could just flop it in when, you know, after, after that work is done. This would be a very cost-effective way of doing it. You know, if, if the city is currently out there, you know, for example, you know, in this photo, if we were redoing, for example, the sidewalk and the, the, the concrete is already wet, we could, you know, install some footings, we could sort of streamline the permitting for them in a way that, you know, if the city is already doing it, we would already know the process is. We could sort of work with them to get it done. So there's, there's some efficiencies we could do with that. Another example is that, you know, through, through development projects, we could support buildings having awnings that would, you know, have like a waiting area for, for transit passengers. That's fairly common in my neighborhood. It's just like a quick way that some, some cities are able to provide rain coverage without like a physical transit shelter. So there's, there's quite a few things to consider. We haven't really done a full analysis on this, but these are just sort of like some of the thoughts that we've had, very preliminary thoughts at this time.
Great, I've got a question for you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. So would the idea be that we could shelter-ready some of these opportunities, or some of these bus stops? And would we jump higher in the list of qualifying stations for Metro? Or would we still be waiting a while for that to end up? Getting some nods here in the room. Hold on, Thomas.
Let me attempt that, and, and Thomas, I just also- Let me attempt that. And, and Thomas, I just also want to take the opportunity to note that there's a lot of slides still left in the presentation and time is, is taking. So as you consider your remarks for the next few slides, perhaps we could summarize them and go a little quicker. So the city would still be responsible for the costs of these transit amenities until Metro, until they meet Metro's criteria. So we can make it easier for them to install, but Metro has some pretty strict criteria for putting in these amenities. As Thomas was saying, there's a large backlog, a lot of communities want them. And so we can, we can make it a little bit easier for them, we can make it a little, you know, but we can make it a little bit less expensive for them. But overall, we might be waiting a long time.
Good?
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Great. I'll keep going then. Thanks. And so, yeah, just to provide more information, this is what the tab said about it. And to summarize, the tab was in favor of considering alternative means. They also recommended that the city be more specific, developing eligibility and prioritization criteria if we were to consider pursuing alternative means of getting bus stop amenities. They also recommended considering ways that we could provide the bus shelter using means that was not city funds, if there's ways to have partnerships, or to sort of think outside the box for ways to, you know, get, get amenities, that would be great. They also recommended that we could consider place making some sort of design features that would make it more of an Issaquah feel for Metro shelters and amenities. So those are just sort of what the tab had, had mentioned at a, at a very high level. So next, I wanted to ask you about transit speed and reliability projects. And so for our second policy question for you, you know, as you know, buses can become significantly delayed at or near signalized intersections. And although the city doesn't provide transit service, there are some things we can do to make strategic investments, to make transit, you know, flow easier through intersections. Transit priority treatments can reduce transit delay, improve transit reliability, and can reduce transit travel time. And so one example of this provided in your packet is a business access and transit, or BAT lane. These are very common in the area. An example of this, you may have seen it, is on SR 900, near the, near the freeway. There's also many examples on the east side. And these lanes, these lanes typically allow for right turning vehicles to access businesses. And sometimes bikes can use them depending on the context, but it's really providing a priority lane for buses so that they can flow through intersections and potentially congested areas a little bit quicker. Another common type is called a queue jump, and these are, these can be used essentially with the BAT lane as well. So these are not sort of, you know, they can be used with other treatments. And this basically gives a bus a head start through an intersection. And you can see on the graphic, passenger is able to get on the bus, the bus gets an early green a couple seconds before traffic, just gives them a couple extra seconds to get through the intersection before everybody else. The delay is really not that significant, and it allows a bus to significantly reduce their travel time through especially really congested corridors. Lastly, I wanted to talk about transit signal priority. You may have heard this as we were talking about the intelligent transportation systems, or ITS. This is a pretty typical application of that. And so as you look through the numbers on this slide, you can see, you know, the bus comes through the intersection, it sends a, a message to the hardware. So that's like number three. It sends a message telling the hardware that it's currently there. And then the intersection, it can give the bus like an extended green, or it can dynamically adjust the traffic signal to allow the bus to make it through the intersection so it's not stuck right there. And this is a map of where they're currently located. I think this is maybe an older map, but they're all over Bellevue along the, the BRT line that goes out east. So that's like the, the line B. So very common in the area. It's another way that buses are prioritized through some intersections. And so, you know, understanding that the city isn't providing the transit service, but we have the ability to make strategic investments to significantly improve transit service, that we do have. And, you know, knowing that the proposed solutions would be, we really only look at this from a holistic analysis, and so that we don't want to necessarily impact any other travel modes below what we consider as being reasonable, the level of service. The question that we're proposing to the committee is, you know, where meaningful improvements can be made to enhance the speed and reliability of high quality transit service? Should the city consider the strategic use of transit signal, sorry, of transit priority treatments through signalized intersections? And this same question was posed to the tab last month. And to summarize, the tab was in favor of using priority treatments. They recommended that the city consider rolling out improvements along, alongside future ITS projects. It's a pretty typical application. They also recommend starting with low hanging fruit treatments first, so things that are, you know, easier to implement. And also to consider ways to mitigate potential impacts so that we're assuring that these improvements wouldn't degrade the level of service of other transportation modes below what we're considering acceptable. So I will pause here to receive your direction. Thank you.
Let's, let's see if we have any additional questions. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, a couple more. First, thank you for answering my, my questions over email. I might ask a few of them in this format too, just so they're shared on camera as well. But one clarifying question I had was, so part of Tab's feedback, the Transportation Advisory Board's feedback was to consider low hanging fruit treatments. I'm just curious if we've thought about what, what are low hanging fruit, or low hanging fruit treatments? Have we kind of thought through what those might be already? Or is that, that work to come?
Yeah, I would say that's more work to come. I think when we're developing projects, those, those would become apparent. I really, I would imagine a low hanging fruit opportunity would be paint on the ground versus like a traffic signal sort of thing, if that makes sense. That's, that's what I would imagine would be a low hanging fruit. Yeah.
No. Also, what kind of, have we thought through like the kind of resources that we have are willing to kind of dedicate to do these kinds of efforts yet? Or is that also work?
Yeah, I would say it's.
Thomas, let me get this one. Thank you. So this is Andrea Snyder, Deputy Counsel, President Hall. That is really a question that we are, we are asking the policy question first. And so if we, if council tells us this is a priority, that it's a, something that the city should be doing, then we would return to council with our resource requests in order to get this done. But certainly, maintenance of transit stops is going to require ongoing staff time, ongoing resources. So something, something to consider as you consider this policy question before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. That's very clear. Can you talk a little, I asked you this over email. Can you talk a little bit more about like what kinds of public-private partnerships we can explore? Like, kind of what's our lane here that, like, I'm envisioning a stop brought to you by Costco Chicken Bake or something like that. But like, I mean, are these kinds of things available to us? Or are there kind of stringent guidelines from Metro in terms of like the kinds of partnerships we can do?
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, my understanding is that Metro has a advertising firm that they work through. And so some of the considerations that, you know, this is kind of getting into the weeds a little bit, but providing a Metro, providing amenities that are like Metro spec is really important because they will not maintain anything that is not what they currently have. They have standards for everything, so we would want to put things that they're comfortable maintaining.
Okay, that, thank you. That makes, I'm glad that I asked the question then, because we don't want to create any liability that we have to, to maintain into the future. So, okay, that's, that's really good to know.
Yeah, and just, just to add to my thought and to answer your question. So that, that is one main, main consideration. I do know that they do advertising. That is something that, you know, they have on the buses and they have at the shelters. They also have artwork that they do at, at some shelters. So there are ways to customize the amenities that are provided, but certainly we would want to know what Metro is comfortable with. Again, to just make sure that we are, we are not, you know, receiving something that we don't want to, or maybe that we don't want to, you know, add an additional effort to. We certainly want to, you know, if, if we were to go down this road, we would want to partner with Metro. So that it's a, it's a good working relationship. Some other ideas that were, you know, passed around by the tab is working with community-based organizations. But again, that's sort of, it is possible that, you know, we, we would just want to make sure that Metro is on board with whatever we're doing. So just, yeah, hopefully that answers your question. And there, there's some coordination efforts that could be done with the city, just, you know, through capital improvement projects. But yeah, again, like the advertising bid, I don't know what the city, what level of, of information the city would need to provide for that. And I think we would need more information to, to fully answer that question.
Let's move on from that one. Councilmember DeMichele, you have a question?
Oh, well, just moving on from the previous question. When we were talking about partnerships, I had different idea in mind, and that was the placement, because some businesses might say, we'd love to have a bus shelter, like QFC, for example, or some major business that's doing retail would say, we'd love to have a bus shelter in front of our door. Now, can you make the bus come down the road to us? And, and actually, when I was on the board at Atwork, and this was many, many years ago, but they did work with Metro to not only get a bus shelter close by for their people with disabilities that came to Atwork, but Metro actually did change the route in order to bring the bus there. So that's kind of the working partnerships that I was envisioning and that, that we may have some businesses in town that would very much appreciate having a bus shelter right in front of their business. And, and again, that would be a lot of negotiation with, with Metro, so.
Right. Any other questions? That's okay. We're gonna let you go this time, because it's been that kind of day. All right. So I don't have any questions myself. So we have another opportunity for public comment. Clerk, do we have anybody online who's expressed an interest in making public comment? You can press star three or look for hand icon on your device to indicate a desire to speak?
We have no virtual attendees at this time, Chair.
Well, that probably means no, no, no virtual hands. No, no. Okay, so we're gonna move on and just, well, let's get to the two questions, which is, should we consider alternative bus stop amenities? And where meaningful improvements can be made to enhance the speed and or reliability of the transit service? Should we consider those sorts of treatments? So who'd like to get us started?
I know, I know. I have lots of notes in here, but it's not the day that we get to do that. So for the first question, I would, yes, I would love to have us move forward to consider the possibility of providing, you know, bus stops and, and other amenities for our bus riders. We are unfortunately far below Metro's criteria for providing those kinds of things, and it will be a long, long time before we begin to get even at the bottom of their list. So I think we have to start looking at how do we, as a city, encourage people to take transit? And I've used the bus stop out here and, you know, the one without the, without the shelter. And yeah, it's difficult when you're standing there and it's raining and, and you're thinking, I've got a car, I could just hop in my car and, and go where I want to go. So however, there are, I mean, a couple of things I think we need to think about is, is the cost. It would be, how much money are we willing to sink into this? I think the design, I'm thinking of all the different neighborhoods we have. We certainly want to be looking at how each bus shelter fits into its community and its neighborhood. And then the other thing, and again, this is an example from a long time ago, but I am aware of communities that have provided bus shelters. And then the good thing about bus and transit is that it is flexible and it can move to meet the needs, changing needs of a community. And when you've placed a bus shelter, that makes it a little bit more difficult to change the route. It's just one of those, those things. So we have to think about, is the location that we're choosing, and that would be one of the criteria that we could consider when we're looking at, at getting into this, is, are we sure that that location is going to be a location that's going to be used for, it makes sense that it's going to be used for a long, long time into the future. So those are just some of the things that I think we should think about. The other thing is the public nuisance part of bus shelters. And I think Metro's made some really good strides in designing their bus shelters so that people can't sleep in them overnight. If you'll notice, the benches have gotten narrower and narrower and narrower, narrower, so that it would be very difficult to sleep on them. I've even had, I was in one bus shelter where the seat was actually sort of a lean to. You got to lean against the back of the bus shelter. There really wasn't a seat for anybody. Or they have a little shelf where you can put down your packages and things like that. But you don't provide people with a place to sleep at night. And then there are, it is a place where garbage collects and things like that. So the, the issue of maintenance, I think, would also be something we'd have to think really carefully about. Is that going to be our responsibility, Metro's? Or how are we going to split that? Or, or in some cases, again, do we get the community involved in making sure that those shelters stay clean? There's all kinds of options, but I think we don't want this to be something that actually turns people against transit use. And a bus shelter that's always a mess and always has garbage is not going to be the thing that we want in our neighborhood. So overall, yes, very much in favor of pursuing this idea and providing our community members with more incentives to ride the bus. So those are my comments on number one.
Can we do number one? Let's do number one. Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, ditto everything from Councilmember DeMichele. I think my, you know, I'm glad I asked the question about advertising. So I mean, it's good to know that we, we'd want to meet their standards. Also, it sounds like we're relatively low on the list too. So like, the timing would need to be an important factor for me. So I wouldn't want us to do any of the surfacing and the plugins for a shelter and then years go by before a shelter is actually installed. So perhaps that's just coordination with Metro, letting them know that, you know, we have, potentially we have resources ready to go, like it can be queued up whenever we understand that it's been added to your work plan or something like that. So, yeah, for question one, the timing would be an important factor for me. And then, yeah, the, what the Transportation Advisory Board's feedback, I thought was great too. So exploring kind of opportunities for, for cost sharing there would be great to look into. And if, honestly, if we have a lot of time before we imagine a shelter actually coming here, it sounds like we have a lot of time to do some of this explorative work anyway. So. Yeah, those are all my comments on the first.
Thanks. I have a couple of thoughts. Unlike my, my colleagues, I'm not really excited about investing heavily in amenities. And Councilmember DeMichele talked about the public. And Councilmember De Michele talked about the public nuisance, and I know there's things we can do, but that concerns me. But mostly, I'm concerned about cost. And if we had an infinite amount of money to spend, I would, I would be in kind of a different place. But we have so many needs right now in this community that I, the cost to deploy them and then the cost to maintain them caused me to pause. And then also, I'm not sure that we've established a really clear link between our goal, which is to drive ridership, and deploying amenities. So, if we did want to move forward with that, I would really like to see us, some strong correlation between, boy, people are not taking the bus because there's a lack of amenity. I'm not sure that that's, that's the case. So, I'm less excited about taking on the cost of implementing amenities. Councilmember Hall?
I just wanted to, actually, I thought those, I think we should take on the cost, but I thought those were excellent points. So, I just want to ditto that in terms of making sure we kind of explore those, those questions before we actually do think about something more concrete.
Okay. Thomas, administration, is everyone, do you have what you need in terms of direction for us on number one?
We do. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's go on to number two, and that's where meaningful improvements can be made to enhance the speed and or reliability of high-quality transit. Should the city consider strategic use of transit priority, priority treatments near signalized intersection? Deputy Council President Hall, would you like to go first this time?
Sure. Yeah, I think so. Honestly, this is, this seems really exciting in terms of something that we could pursue and potentially very low-cost, low-cost initiatives to consider. I think, I was about to say Deputy Council President, right. Councilmember Ray brings up a really good point about considering this amongst all our various needs, too. So, you know, if we start to go down this path, it'd be good to actually get it into, well, actually, if there are any capital costs, it'd be good to get it into CIP. But if it really is just paint on the road, I suppose, that's different. I, I think this is an interesting and creative idea. I would actually prioritize this over bus stop amenities, just because there's so much timing that impacts bus stop amenities. Also, this is a way for us to show Metro that we are committed to transit here in Issaquah, and we want to make it easier for buses to get around. Actually, I think some of the bus-only kind of treatments that I've seen before also allow bikes, if I remember right. And if we're able to do that, I would be supportive of that, too, because then, you know, two rocks, one stone, that's not it. One stone, two birds, two stones, whatever the phrase is. Yes. Would like to see, yeah, how that pairs with our bike, supporting our bike initiatives as well. Definitely seeing how this, you know, ITS, it'll be good to kind of deploy this with ITS, but also ITS will inform where it would best fit in our transit network here in Issaquah, too. So, I would just defer to staff in terms of kind of what comes first there, the chicken or the egg. And then, yeah, those are my comments on.
Great. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you. I'd like to comment on number two. And then, when we're all finished commenting, could you, I would appreciate your coming back, and I have a general comment I'd like to make. So, number two, yes, I support the idea of looking at helping to improve our speed and reliability, especially today, having sat on Front Street and trying to get to this meeting and moving one car length forward every, you know, change in the, in the lights. So, and, and that made me think, however, how the various options that we have might be rather limited as given the geography and topography that we're working with in downtown in the valley. When it gets to be a traffic jam there, there's, nobody's going to go fast, including the, the bus. So, but out on SR 900, I think there are things that we could do for, for sure. I've experienced the, the, what do they call that? The frog leaping. Yeah, queue jumping in downtown Seattle. That seems to work really, really well. I think it depends on what we're, whether we're talking about SR 900 or Front Street, whether we're talking about really viable systems. The, another good place to be looking at, though, would be up in the Highlands. Going on the drag through there would be a really good place to be exploring what we could do there to make the transit move faster. So, I think all of these are really good things for us to explore, explore. We're in the situation right now of looking at these things in the bigger picture and figuring out our policy on them. And when we get down and then, and look at them in a lot more depth, we'll understand a little bit more about how much they would cost and those kinds of things. I did like the idea from the TAB about looking at the ITS that we're going to be doing and seeing how we could work that in at the same time with the signalization. I think that would be a great time to be doing that and something that we could probably do at a reasonable, reasonably low cost. So, I support, I support number two very much. Done.
Done. I'm, I'm pretty much aligned with my colleagues, primarily as it relates to aligning with the ITS project. I think the incremental cost of, of doing some of these enhancements when we're putting ITS in would be very small, so we can get bang with a few bucks. I think the one thing that Thomas said that really resonated with me is that whatever we do doesn't have a significantly adverse impact on other modes of transportation. So, I think that's kind of, also needs to be called out, and that kind of limits where we can do it. Now, what's interesting is a lot of things that we're talking about here have been done on SR 900. They've got the HOV lane and, which looks like, a lot like a bat. They've got queue jumping, heading southbound, and they've got transit signal prioritization to turn into the park and ride. So, there's all sorts, I mean, we have, we have instances of this in the, in town, and they work really well. So, but that's also SR 900, which is a little different beast. So, but I think there are places that we could consider some of these things if it, if it was practical from a, a physical perspective. And, and they work really well. I mean, I've spent, when you're in the big old articulated bus and you are in the far-right lane, and then you got to get over four lanes of traffic to turn into the transit center, you are really happy for that queue jumping to get through traffic. So, it really does make a world of difference. And those, I think we're pretty aligned on that. All right. Thomas, anything else you need from us on this one? Then I'm going to give Councilmember De Michele a couple of minutes to. Okay.
Oh, okay. And I never turned off my microphone, so I didn't have to think about that. So, in their packet, in the GAPS analysis, there were actually three items that were listed in there. And I did send Thomas a, an email to broach this topic. And the third one was the e-bike and the e-scooters project. And that was part of the GAPS analysis. And I sent Thomas an email and just to kind of, I hope I characterized this correctly. But, but we're not looking at that because, you know, a year ago, you guys said no. And so, I just wanted to come back and say, "Well, we said no." But if, if I'm remembering correctly, that idea was brought to us around May time and with the idea that the pilot would start in July. And I remember, and I voted no on it because I didn't think that there was time enough there to work out a really good answer to all of the questions we had in time to really do a pilot and make it successful. And I think I, my no was, I didn't want a program that was going to fail because we really hadn't put the thought into it. So, I, I just wanted to bring it up again. That was one of the recommendations in this GAPS analysis. And I would like to look at e-scooters and, is it e-bikes, again. And I'd like to start that conversation, you know, early so that maybe by the summer of '24 or the summer of '25, we could put in place a pilot that would have a high chance of success. And, and I, and I have to say, too, I've heard from people who said, "Well, how come they turned that down? That would be a great project, da, 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 da." So, I'm thinking, "Well, let's, let's take another look at it if, if that is something." I'm just putting it out there. I know it's not on a work plan anywhere, any of that. But I just wanted to, to clarify that I think our no was a no to this particular proposal and maybe not a no to the whole concept of e-scooters and e-bikes. Does that make sense to everyone? All right. So, that, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Deputy Council President?
I mean, firstly, a million times in support of that. And hopefully, Bird or another company is still interested in kind of pursuing something with us in the future. But maybe the administration can kind of put some thought into this idea of kind of more long-term. What can we be doing for a pilot program there? A couple of other things I wanted to bring up. First and foremost, that are kind of tangentially related. There are tons of federal and state rebate and incentives and tax exemptions for e-bikes and e-scooters and things like that. So, I want to make sure our communications department is maybe putting these together. Are there ways that we can be communicating this out with the community better? Also, the legislature, our state legislature recently approved funding for something called an e-bike lending library, which I had never heard of before, but apparently it allows kind of local jurisdictions, businesses, and nonprofits to lend out e-bikes to people to try it out. And so, I wonder if that's something we can kind of get in on the ground early on and talk with Shelley or whoever can kind of help us get more details about that program, because I found that incredibly interesting. Also, either with that or not, could it be possible to have even like city-sponsored events at the state park or something where people could come and just test ride an e-bike around a loop or something like that? I mean, is this something that, you know, we could be interested in partnership with Sustainability Department of creating opportunities for our residents to kind of explore these options, to see if it might be worth them to purchase? Again, not expecting anything real to come out of that, but, you know, just some ideas I wanted to spit out. And then also agree with Councilmember De Michele, Councilmember De Michele about the pilot program. I also just wanted to say that the existing conditions report was absolutely fascinating. Good to have data in kind of a better characterization that, you know, most of our residents don't live within a walking distance to a bus stop, but many are within comfortable biking distance. And that, you know, parking is one of the main issues for people who are, who can drive to transit centers, but the parking is usually full at those spots, which, you know, we all know, but it's good to, you know, get that on a piece of paper in that, you know, oftentimes, these regional destinations, it takes significantly longer to go by transit than it does by car. And a lot more intra-city trips than I would have expected, like a lot more. And I found that very heartening in terms of kind of our goals and where we want to go into the future. Also, reading and kind of seeing some of the data around there not being any equity implications here either in terms of how people of color are impacted by being more than a quarter mile away from a transit center. So, I thought that was good to see that there aren't any disparities that exist. And again, really appreciate all the work that our consultants and staff did on that report as well. I'm not sure if it's final or if it's still kind of in the process of becoming final. But again, thank you for all that work. Those are my closing comments.
Great. Thank you. Thomas, thanks for the, the presentation discussion. And with that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is ID 1414, Street Standards Update, presented by John Mortenson, our Transportation Engineering Manager. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Chairman Ray. Give me just a minute, and I'll get my presentation loaded up. Good evening, committee members. I'm John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager. Tonight, I am here giving a presentation, seeking the committee's feedback on the update to the Public Works Street Standards. The purpose of the tonight's item that we have before you is to provide an update on the, update the street standards and to seek the committee's support on the proposed revisions to the street standards. The direction that the administration needs from the committee is a simple question, and that is, does the council committee support the proposed revisions to the street standards? Little background on this item. In 2010, the city council adopted the current version of the street standards. And in that street standards version, the council at the time decided it wanted to allow the difference between administrative changes and council changes. And on my next slide, I'll go into the details of what can be done administratively versus what is required to be ruled by council. Since then, a lot's changed. The first thing is the Central Issaquah Plan was adopted, and it included the Central Issaquah Street Standards, which, or circulation standards, which were street standards that actually lived in the land use code, not into the street standards. Also, recently, in 2000 slash 2001, the Mobility Master Plan was completed, which placed a new priority on alternative modes of transportation, set a light bicycle, level of traffic stress standard, number of other things. Most recently, the council adopted the new rewrite of Title 18. And then earlier this year, Thomas Faldrez presented the street typologies to the committee and got some feedback. With all that, I want to talk a little bit about the changes. The current street standards say that administrative changes can be made to the street standards as long as they are consistent with the Wash Dot Design Manual, the Issaquah Municipal Code for Landscaping and Tree Preservation, and the City's Comprehensive Plan. Now, with this street standards revision, we packaged everything up at one time. There's a number of things that are administrative changes, and there's a number of things that are council changes. We have it all in one document, though, rather than trying to do short, two short updates. Some examples of items that would require council approval. And the, so the first one is currently, our street standards say that retaining walls will be designed to the International Building Code standard. If we were to want to change it to the ASHTO, and I forget what ASHTO stands for, but that's the standard that Wash Dot and a lot of public agencies with roads and streets use. In my mind, that crosses the line where that needs to be a council decision, not an administrative decision. The street typical sections, that's also a council item to approve, which is why the typologies is included in this revision of the street standards that we're going to ask the council to approve. And then, right now, there's a, if the city, the city is required to put in a landscape plan or strip with street trees, this is both in the street standards and in Title 18 of the Land Use Code. And if we were to change the exemption to not allow a plan or strip, maybe, and I'm thinking of an example. We're doing a project right now to determine what would be the preferred section of sidewalk or bike lanes on Squawk Mountain. But thinking of if the community's desire is to preserve the existing trees and minimize, not put in a plan or strip, that would be something that would have to come to the council. With all that, the proposal in the revision to the street standards, a lot of the items that we have are just simply moving things that were orphaned from Title 18 into the street standards. And that includes the Central Issaquah Circulation Facilities. We moved those with minor changes. The only changes really that we made were just making them consistent with how the street standards were. But the idea was to keep the intent of the Central Issaquah Circulation Standards. The other one is sky bridges. That was in Title 18. With the adoption, it was orphaned and just moved it word for word. The street typologies that Thomas talked to you earlier this year have been incorporated into the proposed revision to the street standards. into the proposed revision to the street standards. As we're working on the ITS plan, one of the things, and the ITS plan will, there'll be other things that we'll want to revise, but one of the things, this is a combination of something identified in the ITS plan, as well as a practice that we've gone to in order to preserve our pavement, is to change from using loop detectors in the pavement because loops could cause pavement failure, to radar detection. And so we've got that included into this revision to the street standards. Another one is the Mobility Master Plan, and then now the Comprehensive Plan identified a bicycle level of traffic stress, and we added that into the street standards. And then finally, the last one, minor cleanup, just things to reflect current org charts that we have, try and remove any gender-specific language, and update the references to Title 18 that changed. Want to make a quick apology. I realize that on the council meeting on July 10th, we're doing a public hearing, and I had, in my original packet, said we would try and adopt the street standards then, but typically when we do a public hearing, we adopted the following meeting, so I made a quick revision to that. And so the options that the committee has are to modify the proposed street standards or to make no changes to the proposed street standards and recommend the full council set a public hearing on July 10th, 2023. The administration's recommendation is to support adopting the proposed street standards at the regular council meeting on July 24th, 2023. And the timing and next steps, the public hearing, we'd like to have it set for July 10th with adoption on July 24th. We're working on other updates to the street standards. Right now, we are working on a lot more of a technical update to the traffic signal standards in the street standards. And at this point, I can't say what, how much of that will be items that need to be approved by council versus ones that fit in the category of what can be approved administratively. We're in the middle of working on that, because a lot of technology's changed since 2010, and that's long overdue. Other things that we have on the long-term street standards to-do list are bicycle standards for design at intersections. One of the things that we got from the Transportation Advisory Board when we're talking about street typologies was, that's great, but what about the intersections? And so we have it on the work plan to create design standards at intersections. Illumination standards, working with community planning and development to better coordinate what was adopted in Title 18 versus what we have in the street standards. I think there's some work that we need to do there. And then thinking, and this is an idea I haven't quite fully baked out, but thinking of a way to improve our standards to have a, make it easier to implement smaller, non-motorized transportation improvements, that a lot of the way our standards are currently written, you're pretty much are redeveloping. I mentioned Squawk Mountain, for example, where the standard as written would require street trees and planter strip, and trying to think of what is a context-sensitive outcome and trying to form a conversation with the council on what's the community's desire. Going back to the direction needed, the question is, does the council committee support the proposed revisions to the street standards?
Let's, there's some questions. Deputy Counsel President.
Thank you. There's one, one of the changes that kind of struck me that I just wanted to ask about in terms of what impact it would have. Find it in there. Oh, here it is. It was the one that added that six intersections can operate at level of service E or F as long as citywide average is E or better. Can you talk about what that means, the impact that is?
Yeah. That one actually doesn't change anything. That was more housekeeping. In the transportation concurrency part of Title 18, and I'm going to say the former Title 18 and the rewritten Title 18, we have it where the city's level of service at a traffic signal is D or better, except for at six intersections, for a variety of reasons, the council at the time decided that those could operate at level of service E or F. Now, what we did with this was just to put into the street standards what is already into the city code. It's just more of a cleanup item.
I wonder if that would be a potential topic for conversation in the future, as whether or not that's a good... Were they six, like, intersections in particular that the council had thought, or the...
Yeah, it's six specific ones where it would take a lot to get to D or better. And so the six, I don't have them all memorized. East Lake Mammoth Parkway and Southeast 56th is one of them. Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Issaquah Falls City Road. The, here's an interesting one. Talis Drive in SR 900 was one, but then when we updated our concurrency back in 2017, that one was no longer at level of service E or F. It was actually D or better. And I know the intersection of Sunset and Front is also one of them. That's one of our worst traffic signals.
Okay. So the investment is, would be a lot to get it up to even B?
Correct.
Still wonder, though, if in the future... Good. Sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Andrea. So I believe that we, the city has had policy discussions on these intersections in the past of how we characterize the different grades to each intersection and how we want to approach those intersections. It's been part of concurrency discussions in the past. As council may recall, we are updating our concurrency approach as well, and so we'll be talking more about, more about the concurrency model, traffic, and investments in our, in our infrastructure, in our transportation infrastructure in the coming year. I think John can tell me when we expect to have the concurrency project back before council.
There's going to be two concurrency projects, and such a fun topic, you can't just have one. The first one is the technical update. So we're doing a technical update right now, and that'll be this fall. We'll present to the committee, which is one where we're, it'll be more of, depending on what the model says, depends on whether it would trigger policy discussions. Although I met with the consultant earlier today, I would be shocked because our traffic counts are so much less than what the model said they should be. But the other one, which will be in the future, and we don't quite have the schedule ironed out, is a conversation to ask the question, does the city's transportation concurrency system align with the Mobility Master Plan guiding principles? And if yes, then, okay, that work's done. If no, then what? Do we do nothing? That's, in my mind, always an option to consider. Do we modify the current system, or do we overhaul the system and redo it? But that's conversation for another day.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the answer and the comment.
Any other questions? All right. We have another public comment opportunity. Declerk, do we have anybody with us online?
We do.
Oh. All right. So if you are online and you'd like to make comment at this time, you can press star three on your phone or look for a hand icon, and we'll wait just a second and see if anybody raises their hand and would like to make comment.
No, Sharon, no hands at this time.
All right. Well, we will, we will move on, and we'll move to the next section, which is deliberation. And the administration is looking for input on our support for the proposed revisions to the street standards, so... What was that? Thumbs up? Well, I think I'm going to make you talk about it. Any comments that you'd like to make?
You know, I, this one feels a little bit easier than the last one in that most of this seems like housekeeping. It seems like you've done your homework and analyzed these, these changes together. So I appreciate the summary of changes document, too, to be able to slug through that massive document. So this seems like a simple update to me, and so, yes, I would support the proposed revision.
Yeah, I'll echo that, and I want to echo what Councilmember Hall said earlier about, you know, every time that staff comes here with a presentation for us, it is so thoroughly done. We just, I can't thank you enough. We get the best materials here, and they're always so clearly explanatory, which is another way of saying that I have no objection to moving forward with the street standards. Appreciate very much. I asked for the marked-up copy, and that was very helpful, and I will admit that I did not get all the way through it, but it's very obvious that it's been very thoughtfully done. And if we have a hearing on the 10th and adopt on the 24th, I will be supporting that as well. So, but just a general appreciation for the thoroughness of the materials that are brought to us here every time. Thank you so much.
All right. Great. And I concur. So the question then really is, we'll do the public hearing on the 10th. We're supportive of that, yes. And then it'll come back for final adoption on the 24th. Consent, okay? Or you want to do regular business?
Oh, I think...
I think consent, too. All right. So let's, let's schedule the public hearing for July 10, and let's put it on consent on July 24. Right. Councilmember DeMichele.
Oh, I, when we were talking about whether it goes on consent or the regular agenda, the first item that we discussed, what are the next steps for that? Is that going back to staff, or what, what is the next step for, for that particular item?
Thank you for that question. I was realizing that we didn't actually spell out what the next steps are. So the transit study is a very big study for us. It is not done. This is just really the first section of us taking a look at what are our existing conditions, what are the gaps, where do we want to head to, right? So there's a lot more development that needs to occur. We do anticipate being back in front of this committee in August with the second set of policy questions from the transit study. So we, we still have the expectation that the transit study will be complete by the end of the year and come to full council at that time, but at this point, we're working on sections at a time, so we're going to come back to this committee in August with the next set of policy questions for you.
Deputy Counsel President.
I just really quickly then wanted also to say, to add on to Councilmember DeMichele's thanks, the kind of thinking, John, thinking ahead, like the 2024 next steps that you have, including this kind of, what sounds like a kind of creative discussion about non-motorized transportation standards, very supportive of us kind of having those conversations. Thank you for keeping an eye out for these opportunities for discussion. Just thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Great, as always. All right. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have announcements. Any announcements from the committee? I'm seeing a maybe. I'm seeing a yes.
And I'm looking at Andrea. The Regional Transit Committee has their meeting, I believe, next week on the 20, 21st. And I believe the SAFE, they're going to give us another report on the SAFE project, which is increasing safety on the bus system. And I will be, I will be in Spokane, but I will be at the RTC meeting, because that is an issue I think of real importance to our community. So anybody who wants to watch the Regional Transit Committee and watch that report, it is online on the King County website, or contact me, and I'll, I'll help you find it. Thanks.
Thank you. Nothing? Okay. Since we have no, nothing else, this meeting is adjourned at 8:02. Thank you all.